7:01 PM. And tonight, we are in regular session. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. Our next item of business is communications. And I have one that arrived from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control from the Department of Commerce. And this is a permit for a transfer of a D-1, D-2, D-3, D-3A, and D-6 permits. And this is for, it's transferring from Pawpers, Inc., doing business as Pawpers, to DAJ Athens, LLC, doing business as Pawpers. And council has been informed that they would need to send any responses if there were concerns about this transfer by July 12, 2021. Thank you. And do we have any other communications from other council members? If not, oh, Councilmember Fall, yes?
Thank you. I just want to remind you all that it's super easy to get a COVID vaccination. It's important that we all get our, everybody who's, that's qualified to get vaccinations should be getting them because we need to get lots more people in our county to have vaccinations because our rate is a little on the low side. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. If you have no other communications, we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Elizom. Okay. Auditor Hecht.
No report.
Mayor Patterson.
I have a couple items tonight, President Isley. First off, we, there was a ribbon cutting for the Bailey Trail System, Donville Trailhead that occurred this afternoon with representation from ODNR as well as the abandoned mine lands director. And then tomorrow at 11, or Wednesday at 11, sorry, the 23rd at 11, there will be a ribbon cutting ceremony for the microgrid down at the service garage feeding off of the water treatment plant solar array. So encourage anyone from council, if you so choose to come down and be a part of that, that'd be wonderful. And then finally, just to kind of get ahead of things, it was discovered, I believe it was last Friday, Thursday or Friday of last week, that we do have a storm tunnel issue on Schaefer that is being looked into in between, I believe, Byard and West State Street. So more to follow on that. That's all I have, President Isley.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Okay, thanks. We'll move on now to ordinances for third reading. The first ordinance is 7021. This is an ordinance authorizing the disposal of certain fire equipment, fire department equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 7021.
Second, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And this ordinance allows our fire department to dispose of, by donation, some equipment that they no longer need. And, but it's some air mask and some harnesses and regulators that will be able to go to someone else who will hopefully be able to make good use of them.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 7021. Do we have any other comments or questions from our elected officials, our council members, or our public members who are attending tonight? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7421 is an ordinance authorizing the creation of an uptown designated outdoor refreshment area known as a DORA, and is introduced by all members of council. And I believe Councilmember Crowell will be going ahead and speaking to this tonight to begin with.
Yes, thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to amend 07421.
Second. Second by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you.
So I believe, as everyone knows, we have been, the Athens Uptown Business Association has proposed this designated outdoor refreshment area for mainly the downtown, the uptown area. And we discovered that there were a few inconsistencies between the proposal that AUBA put together and our actual ordinance. They're very, very minor. We mistakenly used Factory Street when Station Street was intended. And this is to include the area where Athens Uncorked is, and that development, Louis Louis, I believe, may be no longer, but that's that location. And so any further liquor establishments that come into that area would be included as part of the DORA. That's one of the changes. Another change is that initially, the plan was to have the DORA area come down Union Street to Depot Street, which is right on the edge of sort of the Cat's Den. And we realized we wanted to include Star of India as well as Cero. And so this amendment extends it a little bit further down West Union Street to Smith Street. And I know that the mayor has been working closely with AUBA on this proposal. Would the mayor like to continue with amendments? I will. As was pointed out, another error was the sanitation plan, where the sanitation plan spoke to the DORA being within the uptown franchise area or district. And the, while the DORA does by and large exist within the franchise district, it does extend beyond the franchise district. So I've provided to council, all of you should have received, I know it was the 11th hour, but you should have received that language a little bit earlier, a little while ago. And you'll see in bold where the amended changes are for this, where it now reads, I'll just address the amended language. The DORA is largely contained within the city's franchise district for trash and recycling. And then it goes on to speak to the Athens Hawking Recycling would be picking up, as they typically do, seven days a week within the franchise district. What was included was the portion that is outside of the franchise district, which reads now, this is an addition, the portion of the DORA that resides outside the city's franchise district is West Union, west of Congress Street, down to Smith Street, and includes Depot Street and Station Street. The city will be adding two on-street trash receptacles to West Union between Congress and Smith Street, which will be monitored and emptied by city staff. In the section that speaks to staff to carry out the sanitation plan, what was added was to the very first sentence, it reads, one, parentheses, "One staff member to oversee the contract of trash and recycling services." The amended portion is, "And one, one staff member to monitor and empty the two trash, two on-street trash receptacles on West Union." Again, it's not in here, but one of the things I would like to bring up to city council that, moving forward with the Athens Hawking Recycling Center, the deputy service safety director will be renegotiating to have those two additional trash receptacles, you know, brought into the franchise district's plan and expand that plan moving forward, hopefully, certainly by next year, I believe, by next year. So, and then that way, the city employee would not be emptying those receptacles. This is no different than what the city does for the trash receptacles along the bike path down at the end of Courier and other locations where we have them outside, trash receptacles outside of the franchise district. In speaking with Director Terry Moore, she felt that this is, would not impose any undue strain on their employees that are going down and collecting them to, to maintain those two trash receptacles, additional receptacles.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second now for amending, and that one is to amend the streets that are listed so that they are correct and consistent between the ordinance and also the AUBA, the Uptown Business Association application. And the second one is to add additional details for the area outside our solid waste district area for sanitation. And I'll see, are there members who want, before we move, to see if there's any discussion or questions from council members, other elected officials, comments? Yes, Councilmembers Medley.
Thank you, President Isley. I was looking for this amended language, and I'm not finding it. Was it emailed or?
It was emailed earlier.
Was it in the drive?
Could not be loaded. So unfortunately, Mayor Patterson, I don't have, it was not loaded to my machine, which may have been the same reason I was having a problem logging onto the meeting. So we don't have a text and writing.
I did receive an email with the new streets. I have that, but I didn't have anything about the sanitation plan, which we've been talking about quite a bit during this entire discussion, the sanitation plan in general. We had discussed, there were a lot of concerns about adequate trash cans, so I'm glad it was found and these things are added.
So council, I have just put on the share screen the language that I just read to all of you so that you and the viewing audience can actually see the amendments that are bolded.
And President Isley, I have a more general question that doesn't speak specifically to this. I wonder if now is the appropriate time to do that, or do you want to get through this vote first?
It depends on whether your questions, are you saying your questions, are they directly related to the amendment that we have under discussion right now?
It sort of is. If you don't mind.
Why don't you go ahead and bring it up now, and we can, we can discuss, and then we will vote on the amendment shortly.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. With this, with these last minute errors that we're finding, and the, I don't even know what the likelihood of getting this up and running this summer will be. So then my question is, is there, should we entertain possibly tableing this to get it right, and then revisit it when we have a full season ahead of us?
And if we would want to do that, I think what we should do is finish the discussion on the two amendments, the corrections. We'll vote on that. And then you would have a motion to suspend, that's, I think this is under the advice of the law director, the order in which these things should occur. And then if you want to, after that motion to suspend has been voted on, then if you wanted to, you could raise the issue of, or propose a motion to either postpone indefinitely or postpone to a date certain, or lay it on the table, or table it. Entabling it would, so, so entabling it would mean that it could be brought back with a majority vote required, it could be brought back at a later date. But it would, if not acted on, it would die at the end of the year on December 31st, the ordinance would.
I see.
So here, so our path is, we're going to amend first, then a motion to suspend and that vote, and then if you want to, then the motion to table. So right now, any other comments on our amendments? If not, then all those in favor of amending ordinance 7421, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Okay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 07421.
Okay. We have a motion to second from Councilmember Grace.
And the, sorry, the reason, yeah, the reason being is that I do believe the Athens Uptown Business Association is ready to move forward on this, and they do hope that there can be a late summer benefit for the uptown business area with the designated area for a DORA. And I will say that they began working on this in early April, and I've been meeting weekly, and I think that they have done due diligence to make this work, and certainly the research. I also know that they worked with a class in the College of Business this summer to investigate other Doras in the state of Ohio, and received a lot of very positive feedback and very few problematic issues with the DORA. And I do think, especially in coming off of COVID and in this time, that, that city council should support the uptown business owners in this proposal. And I will also say, I do think that today's amendments are, don't change really the essence of the DORA, and that we have had three readings of the original proposal and the original ordinance, and that I am in support of suspending the rules and allowing the DORA to go forward in support of our Athens Uptown businesses this summer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. So with all due respect to Members Medley's points, if it was not ready to go forward, I 100% agree that we could table and wait for it to be, but I do believe that there is an economic benefit for the city of Athens this summer. And so I am making a motion to approve 07421.
Second. We have a motion seconded by Councilmember Fall for approval of 7421. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Fall, and then Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Crowell that the uptown business people have done their due diligence, just like the park went last year. It was a learning process. There is a process to update the Doras that's in the template, so there is that ability. And I think that with, because we are coming out of COVID, it will help to build community and to get people out in a, in a nice outdoor sort of thing that will be really good for our community. So, thank you. I want to say thank you to Jessica Thomas. She's done a huge amount of work on this, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ziff.
Yeah, I had, I had a question. So with, with the DORA being expanded past Depot down to include Star of India, is that going to include the odd side of the street on that portion of Union, or is it still just the even side of the street?
Well, Members Ziff, if I may answer that, it is the north side of West Union, so, yeah.
So my only concern with that is that with there being the DORA, and now it would be an open carry environment, open container environment, excuse me, there isn't a designated pedestrian crosswalk with the entire, the southern side of Union for them to cross that. So they would be on the north side, but there's no actual pedestrian designated walkway for them to cross over to go down Station over to Depot. That was just sort of a concern for me, this with, with there being open container and alcohol involved, and that's already a somewhat busy street with traffic, I just wouldn't want there to be an added risk for people to just walk into the road. I don't really know what we do about that, but.
Councilmember Grace, thank you, Councilmember Ziff. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of Member Fall's statements and express my appreciation to Jessica Thomas and AUBA members for the work that they've put into this. I think, in some ways, starting it kind of late in the summer gives a shortened period to test it out, see how it works, and it can be adjusted and amended as needed moving forward. So if community, council, businesses, others find things that should be adjusted prior to a full summer next year, then I think that's something that could be done. And also, I believe there is a crosswalk at the Little Roundabout, that is at Smith Street, where Smith Street comes into Union, that, that roundabout is at Smith and Union, and there is a crosswalk there.
I walked to get there, though.
Could I just add one to this, thank you, Member Grace, just addressing the crosswalk. I know there is one down there at the roundabout, but with the DORA not including the south side of Union Street, then technically people aren't allowed to walk on that portion of the road with an open container. It's, to me, it sort of reads as forcing people to jaywalk with them not legally being allowed to have an open container on that side of the street. I don't see a way for them to cross. Number How?
Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. Yes, Members Ziff, I agree with you, and long before the DORA proposal came forward, I was actually with my son, and we were crossing at that intersection to go to the bicycle shop, and I noticed with or without a DORA that it was a little bit of a complicated intersection. It's just a little bit of an odd, as Depot Street goes down to Station Street, there's that island there sort of in the middle, and it's not exactly clear where the best place is to cross the street. So quite frankly, I think that we could have our Engineering and Public Works Department examine that and see what might be the best solution. I don't think it's specifically DORA related, though, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson, and then Councilmember Medley.
So, in direct response to the crosswalk, I did reach out to Acting Director of Engineering and Public Works, Jessica Dine, on this point unto itself, and she gave me a synopsis. And just to read this to council, if I may, that there are several factors that need to be evaluated when reviewing an uncontrolled crossing location, which is what this would be. I don't think council, and I know I don't want to put another traffic light on West Union. The things that are evaluated are lighting, 85th percentile for speed, number of lanes, geometry, pedestrian volume, traffic volumes, distance from other intersections and crossings, and other such factors. She did go back and look at the crash reports. Of course, these are, there was one vehicle pedestrian conflict. It was an individual who was in a parking space, who was at a conflict with a vehicle. And the other one was two vehicles that had conflict in that area. There were no reported in 2018, 2019, or 2020. She provided that to me. She did review the site today, and that site would be the west side of Depot Street North, which is the dead end, and Depot Street South. And she said she is concerned about the geometry to put an uncontrolled sidewalk there, the geometry of the intersection and pedestrian visibility. But if she would like for me to do a full review, that she would do so. I am going to ask her to do a full review of that particular area to see what we can do. It was just mentioned at the, the Smith Street Roundabout, the West Union Mini Roundabout, that is 600 feet from the intersection in question of Depot and West Union. So to all, everyone's points when it comes to the crosswalk, and Member Medley, I know that that was in your questions to me as well, it is certainly something that I am asking the acting director to look into, to see, again, in her opinion, whether it fits with what is needed in that area for a crosswalk.
Okay. And Councilmember Medley, you had a comment, and then after you, Auditor Hecht.
Thank you for that response, Mayor Patterson, and I appreciate everyone's comments. The safety plan has been another area that I've asked some questions about, and I totally understand where this is coming from. We want to support our uptown businesses, you want to see them thrive, we want it to be a vibrant uptown, especially after a year of COVID. When this particular situation, we're allowing people to drink alcohol out in the street, and I don't want to fix problems after the fact, if we can. And when, you know, if we're going to be evaluating an intersection that's going to be involved in the DORA footprint, maybe that should happen before we establish the DORA. And again, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm getting a notice that my internet's unstable, so hopefully I don't lose you all. So that's my hesitation. I want, I just want this to be safe and thought out. It just feels like it's being rushed a little bit on, from my perspective, and I know work's been happening since April, but even tonight, we're fixing problems that are just recently identified. And so that's my perspective, and I know there's general support for it, and I just wanted to share my justification for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Medley. Auditor Hecht.
I have a question, and I read what the mayor put up there, but that was very quick, so I guess I'm unclear. If you have a DORA hub, and you, say from Uncorked, and you want to go to the Skull, are you allowed, is that DORA continuous down through there? So where you cross the street, and you go down Depot and around, or whatever? So it's continuous, so you would be, good crossing or not, you would still be within the DORA trying to get over to the other establishment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fall, and then Councilmember Ziff, if you have.
Thank you. I think that what Auditor Heck was also moving towards is that because of how the DORA is structured and the other things that are coming later with the other code, that it's, it's not, it's not that the street, that there's going to be illegal drinking on that street because the DORA is, covers that street. And they couldn't drive down the street with an open container. And so I think that that's what, that Auditor Heck was kind of pointing towards. So I think, I think it's important to kind of look at that angle, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Fall, Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, President Isley. Not to hearken back to something we've been talking about, but it occurred to me that with trying to figure out a safe way for pedestrian crossing, would it be possible for us to extend the DORA just on that one section of the south side of West Union going from the roundabout with the crosswalk down to Depot? Not necessarily all the way up, but just that one small section of the road, because that would open up an actual crosswalk for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Patterson. Thank you. And then Councilmember Medley.
Thank you.
Mayor Patterson?
Members Ziff, you know, when we, when we have been looking at the DORA boundaries, which, not only Ayuba, but the city, I have been looking very closely at this, and that south side of West Union, as it goes down, the south side is largely residential, while it's probably NAB zone, those are all rentals up and down there, and what we're trying to do is to be intentional to where the DORA footprint is really where there are drinking establishments by and large. And so that was the logic behind that. To minimize someone going into, you know, their house, filling a DORA cup up with their own beer, and then going back out onto the street.
Okay. So I appreciate all the discussion. We're going to take one more comment from Councilmember Ziff, see if anybody else wants an opportunity to speak that hasn't spoken as of yet. But we do have a motion and a second, and my comment would be that it does sound like we have the Acting Director of Public Works who's going to investigate this. So the motion on the floor right now is you either approve it, or you don't, in its present form, with its definitions, with its sanitation area, with its, however safe or unsafe you think that area is for, for the pedestrians. So Councilmember Ziff, and then we'll open it up for one final round to see if there's any other people who have not spoken before, because I want to give everybody an opportunity. Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Isley. So, thank you, Mayor Patterson, for all that information as well. I totally agree. We don't want to be putting it just all over willy-nilly. The section I was referring to was just the section from the roundabout to Depot, not extending up. So in just, there's just the field there, there's no housing or anything. So that's my, that's my final thought for the night. There we go.
Okay. And are there any other council members? I see Councilmember McCary would like to make her comment. Yes?
Thank you. I do appreciate all the conversation deliberation, and particularly the point that this is an ordinance that can be updated as needed, and I'm just wondering to Mayor Patterson if you have any sense of how long the more thorough safety investigation would take compared to the goal of beginning in late summer with the DORA?
I, to answer that, I can certainly ask the Acting Director to begin an assessment of that intersection, you know, this week, you know, to look into that.
Thanks.
Okay. And, and I want to give an opportunity for the members of the public who are here tonight, and I wasn't sure if Mr. Ostrich was raising his hand, if you would like to speak. Yes, we can, we can recognize you. Just give us your name and address, and we have it for the viewing public and for our record.
Yeah, it's Art Ostrich, 91 South May, in the great city of Athens. Yeah, I just, I feel like if we can practice this for three weeks or four weeks, I think that's the only, you know, July 15th through August 15th at most, I think it would be a really good way for us to understand and make the changes necessary for how it could really be what I see as a boon for the summer of '22. You know, so just give it a shot, and I understand there's probably going to be some issues. There's always issues when we change things. And, you know, knowing that this has a time limit on it, I think that, you know, it's a kind of a perfect little opportunity for us to play with something that could be awesome for Athens. So, you know, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. Okay, is there anybody else? Mayor Patterson? Yes?
Thank you, because I've been answering questions but didn't have a chance to comment. I just want to remind everyone that this was Ayuba, the Uptown Business Association that came forward to this, so it's not just, you know, drinking establishments, it's other retail on, within the Ayuba footprint. So that was number one. Number two is that to answer one of several questions that Councilmember Smedley had sent to me, so Councilmember Smedley, thank you for reaching out with the questions that you did have. And this is a good time to remind everybody, the city already has an existing section in code. It is 9.12.22 Sidewalks and Gutters. And it speaks to the fact that the businesses in the uptown area and within the DORA, they are responsible for litter control and the, and no obstructions of the sidewalks and whatnot, to include 18 inches out into the gutter. So that is something that I think that we, I know I will get that out in heavy rotation to the businesses, that you are responsible for any litter that is on your sidewalk or out in the gutter area, but that, again, we will be deploying dump, trash receptacles on West Union in areas where we currently don't have them. And we'll continue to do that as we're looking at potential in the future replacement of our Big Belly system uptown. So that's a different conversation for a different day.
Okay, and I see that Jessica Thomas has her hand raised, and Jessica, if you can let us know your name, address, and then if you represent an organization, which I failed to ask, Mr. Ostrich. Sorry.
All right. Hi, thanks, thank you, President Isley. Jessica Thomas, owner, co-owner Brennan's Coffee Cafe, and the Chair of the Uptown Business Association. Thanks, my Wi-Fi keeps kind of cutting out, so I kind of tried to raise my hand and kept glitching. Yeah, I just want to echo what Art and Steve said, that this is definitely a good way to sample this, to get a little bit of a hand on what we think will be happening next summer. We've done a lot of looking around and talking, great research from a class last week, and it's something that benefits the entire uptown area. What these students came back with, the numbers are just phenomenal. You know, most of the places are 15% to 20% increases in retail and non-liquor establishments during their DORA hours. They've had really, very low, low numbers, to some having zero negative consequences. Most are saying that, you know, they would recommend it to any community in the area, and there are about 56 now in Ohio. So they've been going on for a while now, and we've not had any issues anywhere. So I really think we can, we can kind of, we can observe this summer, we can look at the trash situations, and we can really keep an eye on where we see our troubles, you know, popping up, so that next summer, we're fully prepared for what I anticipate will be a very busy summer, as we hopefully are coming 90-some percent out of COVID by then. That's really all I had, unless anyone has any specific questions. I appreciate all the concerns and, you know, taking notes and things that we need to look at, because it's a fluid plan, it's a fluid, a fluid setup, and that's how the Department of Commerce designed it, so that we can tailor it to our community, and it's not a one-size-fits-all for every place in the state, which is really great, because it allows us to take away and to add parts that we need, and, and not have things that we don't necessarily need. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay. I think we've given everyone an opportunity to make comments or ask questions. I appreciate the comments from the public as well. And Councilmember Smedley?
One more comment. Thank you, President Isley. You know, this is a hard vote for me to make, and I think what seals the deal for me, though, is that it, you know, hearing all this feedback, and I'm all about hearing all sides, and I learned from other people, this will be a short period of time in this first iteration, and we do have the opportunity to change it. And I just stress in that the most, because the last thing we want to have happen is someone to get hurt, and our businesses to hurt, be hurt in the process. So I hear, I heard everybody's points, and, and I just want to make sure that we're being extra cautious and extra careful as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Smedley. All right, we have a motion and second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Thanks for all your comments and discussion tonight. I appreciate it. We'll move on now to Ordinance 7521. This is an ordinance authorizing the disposal of a trackhoe in the Department of Engineering and Public Works that is no longer needed for municipal purpose. Introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 7521.
Second, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And this is the process that our Department of Engineering and Public Works needs to go through in order to properly dispose of equipment that they need to replace with alternate equipment, and so they will be disposing of a 2014 Caterpillar trackhoe through trade-in.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of Ordinance 7521. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our public members tonight? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7621 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement trackhoe for the Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 7621.
Second, Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, Member Ziff. And this is the sister ordinance to the one that we just adopted, that allows for the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder, or to use one of the city's cooperative purchasing programs for the purchase of a replacement trackhoe for the Engineering and Public Works Department. And this authorizes the necessary expenditure for that trackhoe of up to $60,686.42, from, part of that coming from the street fund, and part of it from the water maintenance fund.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 7621. Any questions or any comments from council members, elected officials, or our public members tonight? Councilmember Reisner?
It just occurred to me, the amount that you quoted goes over the $50,000 limit, which would necessitate a go-out-to-bid. Has any bid specifications or any contractors or vendors been approached on this?
I don't know on the status on that, Member Reisner, but it does include the lowest and best bidder or cooperative purchasing program in the language of the ordinance. So, and it, it may be, like, we don't have a specified amount that we would be getting a trade-in on our old trackhoe that we are trading in, so I'm not sure if that is, is relevant in this, as far as which option they're able to proceed with. I don't know if perhaps the mayor or the auditor has any clarification on that.
I don't.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor Patterson, please.
No, I said, I don't, I don't have anything.
Oh, you don't? Well, and so my question is, is if we go through the administrative services, does that mean that we don't need to have a bid?
If you're going through the co-op, through the cooperative, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So it does restrict us to that, then? Okay. Is that true? No. Clerk of Council, I see you questioning me. Or if, if, if the mayor, and the auditor, and the law director, and the clerk of council are comfortable with us proceeding?
I do have a comment. I do have a comment.
Yes, please.
I think, as far as, yeah, there's, I think that the money for this vehicle is already in their budget, so there's no authorization to spend plus appropriation, because I think it's already in there. There are those bigger funds that use a lot of vehicles, we have put money in there. So this is for, what is it, sewer and streets, or, I don't know?
Street and water maintenance, and sewer maintenance.
Yeah. I was looking at the sewer fund today for some other reasons, but I know that they have $40,000 in their vehicle budget line already. So, you know, the water department likely has money in there already, and, you know, whoever else is splitting it, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And is it, so are we comfortable, then, with proceeding with approval of the ordinance? Or a vote on the ord, as is? Okay. All right. We have them, but thank you for the question, though, Councilmember Reisner. We have a motion and second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. The next one is Ordinance 7821. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to pay a one-year membership fee to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, known as ORCA, to provide the financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the Bailey's Trail System, along with other recreational activities. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 07821.
And we have a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. I'll just go ahead and read Section 1 here. It has all the pertinent information. The mayor is hereby authorized to pay a one-year membership fee effective from August 1st, 2021, to July 31st, 2022, to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, a regional council of governments, for funding the Bailey's Trail System, along with other recreational activities, in the amount of $90,000 from the city's transient guest tax paid into the general fund. Said authorization shall be contingent upon the same level of financial support by the County of Athens. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. Councilmember Smedley, and then Councilmember Fall for comments.
Thank you, President Isley. You know, I'm glad to see us moving forward on this, and hopefully it passes this evening. This was a change in how it was initially introduced, and this certainly is more palatable for the city to invest in the Bailey's due to its potential impact on our city. If we should find ourselves in a position to view to invest more into trails that might complement the Bailey's, I would like to see the city perhaps improve some of our own trailheads, like Seon cells and that sort of thing, because once, then we can kind of build on that, that sort of opportunity, the trails in the county, and, and then, then we'd be investing directly in our city for something like that. But certainly value the investment in Bailey's for what it could potentially bring to the city in the future. Thank you.
Okay, and, yes, we had Councilmember Fall, and then after that, the mayor.
Great. Thank you. I want to point out a couple of people who've had a real impact on this over the last couple of years, and one of them was Pete, who, you know, was dogged in a lot of what he did with this project, which I think is really nice. That's Pete Katsas. And then Paige Ellis, who is in charge of the, what is it, Conference and Tourist Bureau, whatever it's called. And she worked really hard with some of the other people, and cheering some of the committees and stuff. And I think as one of those people who really pushed for the funding to come out from our community, and for the benefits to come back into our, our community, instead of sending it off to some kind of pay-for-success program, is a win-win-win for this, for this program. And I, and it's great, because I've already seen a lot of the awesome stuff that's been going on with it. So I want to say thank you to all the people. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Mayor Patterson?
I just want to circle back around to Member Smedley's comment. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I agree with you wholeheartedly. And that is, the, you know, the grace of the city, the citizens of Athens to approve the arts parks and rec levy to make those kinds of improvements, you know. You know, we already have funding for that, which would be through that, the recreation levy that exists right now. So I, it's interesting, I just had a conversation with Director Moore earlier today about that topic. So, but duly noted, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. And I see that we have Jesse Powers from ORCA with us tonight. And did you want to offer any comments or observations? Thank you for joining us.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for your consideration. I think, Arianne, you're right on the right track. When you have one, the, the largest mountain bike trail system in the state of Ohio and a regional destination like ours, which will be the longest contiguous mountain bike optimized trail system east of the Mississippi River, we're just going to be in a better and better position to continue to leverage public and private investments, not only for the Bailey's Trail System, but for all our outdoor recreation opportunities. And we really look forward to making this a regional strategy to increase Ohio's tourism and providing that value to the state and, and opening the door for long-term investment here, which has been lacking for a long time. So, thank you all.
Thank you for the comments. All right. Any other comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our public members attending tonight? If not, all those in favor signify by saying, for approval of ordinance 7821, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you. Ordinance 7921. Is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept a Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2021 Energized Community Grant Fund, and declaring emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 07921.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Reisner.
As discussed in committee, as well as first reading, Athens is a member of the, of NOPEC, and they do offer grants through their NOPEC Energized Community. The city had previously entered into a grant agreement with NOPEC and to receive one of these grants. And I believe the city administration plans on using this for some solar-powered lighting on the east side of Athens. And this simply allows the mayor of Athens to accept this grant, these grant funds. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance, 7921. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our public members? Mayor Patterson.
I would encourage council and the viewing audience to take a drive over to the Far East neighborhood, Townsend, over to Grand Park. The, the six lamps that we got with last year's NOPEC grant is now fully functional to where we have mid-block lighting over there. And this would continue to increase that as a, basically a pilot project, where we don't have a power grid, we now have solar power lighting and making those neighborhoods more well lit.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8121 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute supplemental electric line easements and rights-of-way for the Strouds Run Clark Line with the Ohio Power Company, AEP, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 8121.
Second from Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. This is exactly what the, the ordinance title says. This will be, they will now be to finish the, the work that they've been doing in that corridor. And it's gone through administration and we've talked about it several times. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of 8121. Any other comments, questions from our elected officials or our council members or our public members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll now move on to ordinances. Thank you, Councilmember Fall. We'll move on to ordinances for second reading, the first two of which I think we'll be suspending, and then the others, we will be reading their titles and seeing if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 7721 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to accept bids where necessary and enter into contract for a replacement of the roof of the city building and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 07721.
Second.
Sorry.
And we have a second from Councilmember Medley. Okay.
The reason being is that we have a failing roof on our city building and we need to start repairs as soon as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending, for approval of suspending rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 07721.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. And as read by President Isley, this would allow our Service Safety Director to accept bids into doing this work. It also amends the 2021 appropriation ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance $200,000, which is approximately the estimate that we received for the repair of the roof. Yes, thank you, President Isley.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. And any other comments or questions, or excuse me, for approving this? Any other comments or questions from council members? Or elected officials or our members of the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 8021 is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08021.
We have a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. The reason being is these are appropriations that we would like to have complete prior to the July break. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 08021.
Second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. We have a number of appropriations in this ordinance. We have $2,000 for needed laptops for city council. We have $1,500 for the Athens Police Department to purchase a new mobile computer router. BG Fund appropriations and transfers for administrative fees in the amount of $7,383.38. We have a $5 appropriation for the DRD county fees. We have $11,000 for the parking garage fund for repairing the elevator. And then we have, as previously discussed, appropriations for new furniture for the utilities' billing office, as well as for meter-reading equipment for EPW. Thank you, President Isley.
We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any questions or comments from council members, elected officials, or our public members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8221 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.03, Executive, Other Officials, Section 3.03.07 Deputy Auditor. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd actually like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08221.
Okay. We have a second from Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, Member Ziff. The reason being is that this ordinance and the following ordinance regards the tax administrator positions within the auditor's office. And the auditor would like to begin the hiring process before the break. So we would like to suspend the rules in order to allow the auditor to do this in a timely manner. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve 08221.
Second, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, Member Grace. Just to remind everyone, this is a little bit of a, of a staffing change in the auditor's office, creating two income tax administrator positions, where previously there was a single tax administrator and then another position in the office. And this would create two income tax administrators. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of the ordinance. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or the public? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll now move on to 8321, an ordinance ending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14120. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08321.
Second from Councilmember Medley.
Thank you, Member Medley. As mentioned before, this allows the auditor to get on this during, during the council's break in July.
We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 08321.
We have a second from Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, Member Ziff. And this is simply amending our staffing ordinance to indicate that we will have two FTEs as tax administrators. And then as account administrators, we would be reducing from three to two. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. So we have a motion and second. And do we have any comments or questions from anyone present tonight? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8421 is an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for structural repairs to the Athens Fire Department Headquarters. Project number 343. Introduced by Councilmember Grace. And Councilmember Grace, yes.
I'm just going to keep this process moving along and make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 8421.
Second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And I think the, the reason for the suspension is clear in the title of this ordinance, that we are declaring a real and present emergency, given the structural condition of our fire department headquarters. And they would like to be authorized to begin the repairs as soon as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. And this is the ordinance that we discussed last week. And it includes an appropriation ordinance appropriating from the unappropriated balance of some of $50,000 to the general fund fire, and authorizes the Service Safety Director to expend up to the $50,000 for structural repairs to our fire department headquarters. And I'm making a motion that we approve.
I was going to say.
Or 8421.
Thank you. I forgot who seconded, so thank you. There's a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Yes, Councilmember Medley, thank you. All right. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our public members attending tonight? Yes, Councilmember Medley.
Thank you, President Isley. I believe, if you can remind me, during committee, Chief Reimer mentioned that they, he's still on the lookout for an, an alternative site or a new site. And just making a note to maybe ask him to come back within, I don't know, before the end of the year to see how, where that stands. Because I'm sure we'd all like to see them in a, in a, in a better facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Medley. Mayor Patterson.
One of the things, Members Medley and council as a whole, one of the things I've requested of Chief Reimer is, once they do start to get ready to make the repairs, to fully document the extent of the damage to that building, so that way we can bring it forward to council. And again, as a reminder to the council and the viewing audience, that it's a 66-year-old building that is nearing the end of its useful life. We find ourselves having to make repairs such as this, and we're getting to the point where we're certainly going to have to look for another alternative to the existing building.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. We have a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. 8521 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX General Regulations, Chapter 9.06 Intoxicating Liquors, Narcotics, Section 9.06.04 Possession of Opened Bottle or Container of Beer or Liquor and Establishment of a Glass-Free Zone. Introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Am I assuming we are suspending this this evening? Thank you. I move that we suspend this ordinance because it will start soon. Thank you.
Second. Second from Councilmember Grace. To suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
And the rules have been suspended.
I move that we adopt 8521.
Okay. We have a second from Councilmember Grace.
Great. Thank you. This is changing our code so that we are identifying that there are certain legal places that you can have a open container. It sets out the, what is required for you to be able to have that open container. And then it also changes that you do not get to drive through these areas with an open container. And so it's codifying this, almost all the discussion that we've had this evening. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of 8521. Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our public members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 8621 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide, provide initial funding for creating a remote work system for the city of Athens with Sunday Creek Horizons, a consulting firm. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I assume that we're also suspending
I assume that we're also suspending this one? Is that, yes, thank you.
No, we do not necessarily need to suspend. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, we were introduced to this really great idea last week by Zach Rises. So basically, it's using some of the American recovery money that was voted out for COVID to establish the infrastructure that would need to go forward with one of these programs of getting people who are going to be doing remote jobs and having them move here so that they can have lots of wonderful things and we can share Athens. Thank you.
Okay. We have comments from first Councilmember Fall and then Councilmember Smedley.
Okay.
I mean, excuse me, Councilmember Crowell.
All right, I'll take that. That's a good. I just wanted to say that I did receive some comments from some viewers, from the public from last week about Mr. Rises. And I just wanted to say that Mr. Rises came down to Athens from the Cleveland area to be a student at Ohio University. And he has been dedicated to our area very early on in his college career. And he has stayed. He graduated, I think, two or three years ago. And he has stayed here. And he's been very involved with Athens Hocking Recycling Centers and numerous sustainability initiatives. And he's somebody who has sort of adopted Athens and adopted our region. And, you know, he knows what he's talking about. And he's a very well-respected, for those who know him, local operative, I'll just say. So just for those who don't know Mr. Rises, he is a quality individual who I think can push this initiative forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, President Isley. What was the timeframe for when we would expect something back from Sunday Creek? Do we have that yet?
The mayor does. The timeline.
And if you don't know, off the top of your head, you can just send it to us. That's fine.
I don't. Thank you. Thank you for letting me off the hook. I, no, I don't have that timeframe right in front of me. I will get it to council. Even if you are on recess, I'll make sure that I will address that and get it out to you because you'll take it up again when you come back off of your July break.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to follow with what Councilmember Crowell said about Zach. He also helped with the county auditor and the county treasurer and the delinquent house program that they did. And so, the land bank. And so he's been instrumental in a lot of things that are sustainable and making our community resilient. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. We'll now move on to a one-reading resolution. This is a resolution requesting the Athens City Planning Commission consider amending the zoning code off-street parking and loading/unloading regulations, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Great. Thank you. First, I want to describe what this process means. And then I'll ask for approval of the resolution because it will make more sense.
And we have some comments from Planner Paul Loeb tonight, who I think waiting this whole time.
I know. Thank you. Thank you for talking. We discussed this extensively last week. It's not a new, it's not a new idea or anything because it was also discussed extensively in the comprehensive plan. When the plan, when Title 23 is changed, that's our zoning code, it has to go through a process that is established by the Ohio Revised Code. One way to establish that process, to start it, is for council to ask Planning Commission, by a resolution, to please look at the following information and give your recommendations on what you think and how it could be changed or those sort of things. The Planning Commission has their own process. And they have their own case, how their cases are heard and such. But it will be public, public meetings that they have twice a month. Once the recommendations are given back to council, it can be one of a multitude of things. But most likely, it will be changes. Council will look at it. We may make changes. It would go through a public hearing. And then it would be voted on in a regular three-reading vote. So this is just the start of a process that has a lot of eyeballs on it. So that's the, that's the idea behind just the resolution. So I ask that we adopt the resolution.
Okay. So that's a motion. And we have a second. Councilmember Grace, okay. And now we can open it up. Did our committee planner, Paul Loeb, want to make any comments?
Great, thank you.
Good evening, council. No, I did not have any additional questions or comments. I was under the impression I was here to answer some questions. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
We asked Paul here in case somebody had some questions and that the mayor or I couldn't answer. Though we've been looking at this for quite a while, the planning process, the comprehensive planning process had hundreds of hours of input to this idea of parking changes. And so, thank you, Paul.
Are there? Councilmember Reisner and then Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question after going through the proposal here, the resolution, and I guess this, to the planner, what do you see as the major impact and outcome that these changes will have in terms of, one, parking in general, and two, encouraging more development in the uptown area, particularly apartments and renters who may or may not have a vehicle and need someplace to put it? That's the thing that bothers me the most, so.
Was there, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reisner, was there additional comments on that question?
No, I just want to know, in your opinion, in your best judgment, what will these changes, what will they do? The benefits? What, or potentially, what's the negative of it too?
Okay. I think in general, to your point, your question, this likely would spur some development within our community. I don't think it would be a lot. But I would think that we would have parking areas that is land use that is currently for the, to hold private people's private property, their cars, would then be, could potentially be used to develop housing, which is much needed in our city. Could be developed apartments, condos, single-family homes, multi-unit, you name it. To the uptown area, I think, and we just had a good example last week, I believe, with the Board of Zoning Appeals. There was a proposal for the former Follets Building, historic building right at the corner of Court and Union, right across the street from College Green. Potential developers looking to purchase the property and convert the second and third floors into, I think, 20 units of a single-bedroom, one permitted occupant undergraduate rentals. Absolutely no opportunity to provide parking on that site. It's a historic building. And that variance was denied. And so I would expect that we would see that building sit vacant for a very long time. It is important with a lot of our, in our historic commercial area, a lot of property owners really need, they need rental to make those buildings work. And we've got design guidelines in place right now to make sure that work that's done on historic buildings in the Uptown District maintain that historic fabric. We just, I just sat through an hour meeting prior to this one with our Preservation Board as they reviewed plans for 65 and 67 South Court, which is Little Professor and Court Street Coffee. Many of you have known they've been working on that. And so that was, so projects like that, having, giving flexibility to the property owner and to a developer or to a business owner to make a better choice about how much parking they think they need to make their business work. Just, to me, that gives flexibility to make those decisions, take some flexibility away from, or some authority away from the city, but gives it to property owners to make some decisions. I don't know, you know, you say there's, what negative impacts? Don't know. It's hard to predict what negative impacts will happen until we implement change. I can certainly think of a lot of negative impacts that we're having to our existing regulatory schedule for parking, though. And that would include environmental impacts, land use impacts, floodplain impacts, congestion, reliance on single occupancy vehicles, impacts our ability to walk places, our ability to use public transit and to ride bicycles. Makes an unsafe city. And traffic is an incredibly, incredibly noisy endeavor. You take cars off-road and you'll be surprised how quickly our neighborhoods in Uptown are quiet.
Let me follow up on your explanation there. You mentioned the project at Follets and the fact that the variance was denied. Would, would these changes in our code in any way help the developers? I, I mean, if they need a variance for 30 vehicles, where is that in the, in the changes tier? Where does it say that, well, now don't worry about parking, just build your apartment?
I don't have the resolution in front of me, Councilmember Reisner, but I believe it would give, reduce the parking requirements for a location like Follets in the uptown area for student rentals.
Right. I, I think that we should also acknowledge that our parking, short of being fairly antiquated, the whole parking ordinance, we need to also look at the cost of parking with some of the other things that we have been talking about lately, meaning, you know, rentals that are affordable, rentals that are not only designated towards undergraduates, but smaller rentals like one- and two-bedroom houses that will help the mix of our neighborhoods and the mix of our uptown to be able to get people in. Right now, there's like a mismatch. We have parking, but then a lot of times it may be sitting empty. So there's more flexibility in the resolution, in the code suggestions, that that could be something that can be balanced and such. The shared parking, where if you have a day use and a night use, you can share them. That reduces the cost for somebody doing some development. It separates out, when you don't offer parking, it separates out the parking from the rental. And one reason our rentals are very expensive is because parking that we require is very expensive to put onto land or to build underneath a building. And so when you decouple that, it helps to even out and reduce rent in most situations that I looked at. So there's these justice and economic justice issues that are associated with our parking. And our parking is probably one of the things that keeps us from being able to do a lot of things and have a lot of nice things for the community. So I hope that answered your question.
It does. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Smedley had a question or comment.
I actually hadn't put my hand up yet. I thought Member Grace had her hand up. I do have a comment, but I was going to wait for Member Grace. And she had one. Member Grace. Thank you.
I just had a thought regarding like what Member Reisner and Planner Loeb brought up, that the potential development of the Follets Building, that not only would the proposed change require fewer parking spaces, but it also allows for the parking spaces to be farther from the, from the building. So the developer could make an arrangement with another property owner somewhere to provide parking for the residents who want and need parking. But it could be located farther away from the building than is currently allowed. So that's another change in the proposal that would offer flexibility to the developer and allow those, those big empty uptown spaces to be filled.
And Councilmember Crowell, oh, Smedley, then Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Yeah. And last, when we were talking about this in committee, I was just concerned about some unintended consequences that it might create. I have since had a conversation with a local business owner who lives and works in the city. And there was a lot of interest in seeing what this could provide for that particular business. It offers creative options to, to businesses. But I'm also pleased that this is not, tonight's vote isn't the end of it, as Member Fall explained. This is the first step in many steps. And so we just welcome everybody to get involved and learn as much as you can and ask questions along the way. And changes will, are possible, so if that's necessary. There is a curbside conversation coming up. It's called the Curbside Conversation on June 24th at 5:30 at Armory Park. If anyone's interested in joining that, that is in person. But that's just one of many meetings that we'll be having about this as this moves forward. So yeah, I think we might all agree the city of Athens is in need of an overhaul in parking. And this is the first step of many. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that Member Fall and Member Smedley have hit this on the head in terms of the steps here and that this is a step to get this process going. And we're not approving these changes tonight. And I'll just, to sort of answer Member Reisner's question, at least in my mind, I think that our municipal code, as most municipal codes across the United States, has been based on a car culture, which, in my mind, we need to move away from. And that's why bicycling and bike lanes and our great Athens Transit can be exceptions to how many parking spaces are needed to be, or to be required by developers. But to also answer Member Reisner's question about what could be a negative impact is that if an apartment, for example, let's say in the Follets Building, does not have a parking space and that person who rents that apartment has a car, they will be looking for a place to park that car. And as we all know, a lot of the things in our code were created in order to keep people from, you know, parking their car for long periods of time in our residential neighborhoods. And those who have been around for a long time know that sometimes cars would be parked for weeks, if not months. And then we had no place, for those of us who don't have driveways, to park our own vehicles in our neighborhoods. Well, we've tried to solve that with the 24-hour and now the 72-hour parking rule. So I think we have moved code in a lot of positive directions. And this is another step in the right direction, I think, to get away from that car culture, to emphasize alternative modes of transportation, including Athens Public Transit. But Member Reisner, that's one concern of mine, is if the cars are still here, if we're not out of that car culture, that serious, everybody has a car kind of thing, then we are going to see more cars. They got to go somewhere. And, but I think our current ordinance is around parking in residential areas for 24 or 72 hours, if you have the permit, will hopefully keep that problem from happening. Thank you.
Yes. They do mesh, those two programs do mesh very well. And that, because it's a, the 72-hour parking is an easy expansion of that ordinance. It's very easy to expand because it isn't part of the Title 23. So that was something that we thought about when we were looking at this, too.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments. Any others, any other comments or questions from our council members, elected officials, or those attending tonight from the public? If not, we have a motion and second for approval of Resolution 1021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The resolution has been approved. Thanks. We're on our way.
Thank you.
We now have announcements and other business. One thing I did want to announce that I think we've been perhaps referring to, or have at least made council members and commission members aware of, is that as of August 1st, when council returns from their July recess, we will be meeting in person. And in council chambers. And likewise, if we have any public hearings, those will also, we will ask for public comments in person. Commissions, as I mentioned, are also to resume in-person meetings. If persons from the public do want to attend, we would welcome them, as we always have, to join us on any council member, council meeting night and ask that if you have not been fully been fully vaccinated, that you wear a mask when you come into council chambers. Are there any, and we will be on recess in July, and we will be resuming then on August. We have, I think, one, at least one ordinance that we'll be looking at that first night of when we return. And are there any other announcements that council members or elected officials want to make tonight? Okay. We have three other items of business to take care of. One of them is confirming the mayor's reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I believe Councilmember Riesner, you have a motion for reappointing Kay Tasly?
You took the words right out of my mouth. I so moved.
And we have a second from Councilmember Fall. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, we welcome Kay back to return. That's, that's a difficult board to serve on, and I know many of you have watched that. In fact, I know Councilmember Riesner has gone to some, watched those meetings and followed them, as well as the Planning Commission. So thank you. Next motion that we need to make is for approval of the May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one financial reports. We have a motion for accepting those. So moved. By Councilmember Fall, seconded by Councilmember Crowell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, I'm assuming, none. Our next motion is to accept the May two thousand twenty-one credit card transactions.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Riesner, seconded by Councilmember Ziff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda tonight. And I believe we may have some people from the public who want to make a comment to us. If you do, if you would raise your hand, and then we could recognize you, and you would have three minutes to speak on the topic. We don't generally engage in discussion, but we welcome these comments or thoughts about different issues. And is there anyone that's wishing to make a comment tonight? Okay. Oh, there is somebody. And, and so we'll recognize you, and I'm not sure that, if you could help me with your full name, your address, and if you represent a group?
Yeah, my name is Sarah Coia Bryant, and I represent the Ohio Community Rights Group tonight, as well as just concern citizens about our water and the potential for oil and brine wastes, oil and gas waste to end up in our water supply. I worked on the Athens County Bill of Rights Charter, which helped us establish our Waterhead Protection Act in Athens. And I can't see you guys. I wish that I could figure out what's going on with my video. I don't know if you can see me or not.
No.
Dang it. Okay. Because I do have some, you know, things I was going to show you in the way of paperwork, but that's not working out very well for me. So two things, then. One is that our Community Rights Group turned in some paperwork today to Attorney General Yost, and also to, pardon me, prosecutors around the state, including Keller Blackburn. And these letters are concerning past instances where our roadways could have been polluted by oil and gas brine, and we're asking the Attorney General to investigate that. Secondarily, our ask is about the House and Senate bills that are currently being considered, being introduced in the House by Representative Bob Young and Don Jones, and again, in the Senate by Frank Hogan. And these bills are House Bill two-eighty-two and Senate Bill one-seventy-one, and they're concerning making oil and gas brine a commodity to be used to spread on our roadways. The beginning of the bill, both in the House and Senate, have the same language that I was going to show you, but you can't see me. But it says, "To enact into our Revised Code, establish conditions and requirements for the sale of brine from oil and gas operations as a commodity, and to exempt that commodity from requirements otherwise applicable to brine." And that seems really discouraging, that we already have very lax regulations on oil and gas brine, and now they want to sell it to our communities to put on our roads. Obviously, we don't want to have that happen in Athens, which is why we passed by Citizens' Initiative our Clean Water Protection Ordinance. But we have to understand that our waterways are affected by the waterways around us. I believe that the state will take up these bills in the fall session. So my other ask is that the city of Athens and the mayor draft an ordinance, or, I'm sorry, not an ordinance, but that you guys draft a resolution stating that our city opposes these bills on behalf of our citizens, and then that we share this ordinance, or this resolution, with the Ohio Municipal League so that it can be discussed at the state level, and so that other municipalities have the opportunity to get a little bit more information about what's going on with these bills, and could also make an informed decision to not have products high in radium being dumped onto our roads. And I think that's about it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Within the three minutes, and we appreciate your waiting to speak with us tonight. I know this topic came up once before when that was under consideration, and we confirmed that the city, our particular city was not using brine, but as you say, one municipality's practice affects another, and we're all interrelated. So we very much welcome your suggestion, and if I understand it correctly, you're saying for us to consider drafting a resolution of concern regarding House Bill two-eighty-two and Senate Bill one-seventy-one regarding the sale of the fracking brine.
Yes, ma'am. This brine actually comes from traditional oil and gas extraction, but it doesn't really matter that much because the ODNR's own testing in two thousand seventeen found that the high, extremely high levels of radium are present in both traditional oil and gas waste and waste coming from fracked wells. So neither of these are safe, but we do want to be specific that this type of drilling operation and the pollution from that is dangerous and is not acceptable, be it frac waste or other race full of, waste full of poisonous radon.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. And if there is no one else wanting to make any other comment in this opportunity to speak, we will entertain a motion for adjourning. By Councilmember Fall, so moved. Do we have a second?